Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, in the City of Portsmouth City Council chambers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, we will now have roll call. As I call your name, please indicate your presence with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Youngblood.
Here.
Commissioner Gee.
Here.
Commissioner Thaxton.
Here.
Commissioner Ricks.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman. Five members of the Planning Commission are present.
Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the January 7, 2020, public hearing. If there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion. Commissioner Gee?
I move for acceptance of the minutes as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the January 7, 2020, public hearing. As I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood.
Yes.
Commissioner Gee.
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Ricks.
Yes.
The minutes are approved by vote of five to zero. Announcements of future meetings and conferences, please note that our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, April 7, 2020, at 12:30 p.m., 6th floor conference room, followed by public hearing at 1:30 p.m., City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their April 14 or April 28, 2020, public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cell phones at this time if you have not already done so. Thank you. Our first public hearing item is Z-20-01 Uptown. Anthony Claude of Claude's Lawn Care is requesting to rezone approximately 0.529 acres at 1525 County Street. From D2 Form Base Code, D2 FBC, to the frontage is designated as public open space to light industrial for use as a storage yard. The property is designated on the future land use map in the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan as mixed residential. The property is owned by the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority and is further described as Tax Map 97 Parcel 71. The staff coordinator is Julie Chop. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
My name is Anthony Claude. I'm owner of Claude's Lawn Care. I've been in Portsmouth approximately-
Excuse me, Mr. Claude, do you have, need your name and your address for the record, please?
I'm sorry. Anthony Claude, my address is 3848 Flagship Way, Portsmouth, Virginia, in the Churchland section. I own Claude's Lawn Care. I've been in Claude's, I've been in business since 1987. I came to Portsmouth in 1999. At that time, I bought my shop as well as my home here. I seriously consider Portsmouth of all the places here, and this is where I invested at. At the current time, I currently have 12 full-time employees, and during the peak season, I got anywhere from 20 to 25 additional employees that works for me doing my landscaping and stuff around here. Our business model has kind of changed a little bit, and we are, the reason why we're asking about this particular piece of property is because we want to use it for a lay-down yard, not necessarily a storage area. I want to make sure you're clear that it's not like a junkyard and anything like that. Basically, what we'll be using it for mainly is for like laying down particular plants for different jobs we got coming up. Sometimes we got plants that we got to get out of South Carolina that has to be brought forward, and the job may be started in two weeks, so we just need a spot to lay them down. And it makes it easier for us to pick up this material when the time come to put it in and stuff like that. We enter into, back in 2015, we talked with Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority about this property, and they was researching on what they could do with it. And at that time, and the staff there said that there was not much they could do with it, and they was, we were entertaining them. But since that time, some of the staff have left, new staff come in. We re-entered the conversation back in February of last year. They, I said, "You might want to research and make sure there's nothing else you can do with the property." They looked at it, and Portsmouth Housing Authority agreed, would say, "Okay, well, since this, what do you want to do with it?" Because they didn't want to try to facilitate a sale that would make, that would be against the city code or anything. This is when we came up with this lay-down yard. I did the conceptual layout. Basically, what it is, is a way for our trucks to drive through, pick up material, and carry on to the other site. I mean, that we can load them in the morning and pick them up and, and, you know, just, you know, load the trucks up and then had the plants already there. So it kind of speeds up the process along the way. At this current time, it's a vacant lot, being used very minimum at best. The housing authority looked at it and said they, they, that there was supposed to be a park there. They, it was designated as a park, but they don't have any official documentation that it was supposed to be a park. What my proposed use is to put up an eight-foot fence around it, landscape the front of it with some type of shearing, some, like what we call a tier shearing, something to hide the fence, and then some lower stuff down from the sidewalk back up to the fence. And then on the backside, we'll put some more, some type of, like a Hollywood juniper or something to hide the fence along the side and stuff. It's not going to be a, a lay-down yard that where you would typically have junky stuff. It's just pallets of sod. If we, we know we got a sod job tomorrow, we, when, when the truck bring it, he can put it right there, and we can move outward in this stuff. We have, like I said, we've been in with the Portsmouth Authority negotiating this for quite a bit of time. One of the benefits to us doing this is by, the national objective for the Westbury community was to provide low-income, modern housing for this. Well, the intention was to make this a, some type of housing development, but that didn't work. But by allowing us to use it, we, we project that we will probably hire another 15 to 20 people here in Portsmouth. Our current staff right now, of the 12 people, only two in Chesapeake, everybody else works here in Portsmouth. If we could do this, these folks could actually provide, be, be paying tax dollars here, and maybe perhaps, perhaps to be buying different homes and stuff in this, in, in the City of Portsmouth too as well. We studied this out quite a bit, and we know it'll work for us, but we're not, it's not going to be like a junkyard or anything. It's just, just to lay down plants in there, park, like if we have a bog cut or something, to pick the material up and stuff like that.
Thank you, Mr. Claude.
Thank you.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Sir, have, have you talked to the folks in Westbury, particularly their, their civic association?
I spoke to a few of the people across the street. They didn't have a problem as long as it's landscaped up and pretty, right across the street from us.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Gee?
I, the question I have is in regards to what we were presented. It mentioned also employee parking and vehicle storage. Would it not be used for those at all?
Well, it, it, it may be used for vehicle parking, but the main purpose of this is for the lay-down yard, lay-down yard for that, because it fits our, the size of property that we need to, to do that. Occasionally, it makes somebody may park in there, but I doubt on a regular basis, because we, we were looking at it, we can get all our employees to park right in front of our building and on the side. So we got that part covered. When I originally presented to the staff, that's what I was thinking, but when we went back and look at the model, we can, all our employees can park right in front of our building and on the side.
I have a question, and what exactly would it be used for? If you said, when you have the fence, is it going to be a privacy fence, or you said just, just plants, nothing else?
Plants. Sometimes we have pallets of sod that we like, got to put down for different jobs, and we just needed, the truck bring it on Monday, the job starts on Tuesday, so we do-
So they dump it and have it in a-
No, no, it's just on a pallet, that's all. Like, sometimes we get flagged on it, where we got to do a driveway or something, and we, we may have to buy it out or run it, where the truck come on Wednesday, and the job starts on, on Friday, we can put, use it, just to sit stuff there.
Is there any other place on your, you own two properties, I believe? Is there any other area where this could be done?
Well, we using the other, other side of the yard for some, some similar stuff with equipment and stuff as well, but we need a little bit more storage. That's why we, you know, we trying to expand a little bit, keep from having the, to, to go outside of Portsmouth to find a spot, but we want to stay here. That's why I, most of our contracts are right here in the city.
And, so I went by there this morning, actually, and it looks like people are parking in that area. Is that your employees, or is that residents across the street?
What has happened is, when they put that, I think it's called a Wi-Fi in the city, the cable, those guys, and when they get in the area, it's no real place for them to park, so they'll scoop past there and park their trucks there, and they building a house across the street too as well. And they, the guys, you know, right in the street where they putting the sewer lines and stuff, they got them trucks and tractors, they'll get up on the yard and stuff like that, but it's not us. We, our stuff stay right in that, that paper strip there.
And one further clarification, is it true by code that any type of outdoor storage requires a light industrial use, or an industrial use, Mr. Baldwin? Any type of outdoor storage, whether it's plants, cars, sod, or whatever?
I couldn't answer that off the top of my head without, without checking the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z-20-01. I do have several speakers. As I call your name, would you come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Donna Si.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Z-2001 Uptown is for Anthony Claude to rezone a half acre of land. To have, it sounds to me like he needs that land for a nursery-type atmosphere. And one of my concerns is this, the lack of communication, because the planning department made this denial before it came to the Advisory Commission. They did not have enough information, like for me, I'm learning about it when I hit the door, to pick that up in the window. I like to do my research when I'm going to talk about something, so I'm just running around like a chicken with their head cut off, trying to talk to y'all about this. So the first thing is, the decision was made to deny this with the planning department before it came here to, Planning Commission, to have already done the research. You asked question to Bob Bowen, and he has the research. So y'all didn't do enough research on this. The other thing is that it wasn't planned with the PRHA fully for him to be able to come to y'all and feel confident that he was going to be able to get a use permit for this property, that he is looking at to benefit Portsmouth and the people who live here. So y'all need to table this until you can come back with all the information. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Si.
Ms. Si, I had a question for you. You're aware that these agendas are placed on the web?
Let me kind of inform y'all about Donna Si. She likes face-to-face conversation, and where we can have a conversation. What's happening today is all this electronic out there. So we need to have that information put out by LaVores Pace to say that this is coming, so it can be personal.
I'm just trying to figure out, and how would we accomplish that? Because I also know that, I received this information, but I wasn't privy to the direct conversations between the party and the Planning Commission. So what did or did not happen in those conversations, I can't say. But this was on the agenda and on the docket for us to be discussed today. So I'm just wondering what we can do to better facilitate the public knowing about what items are coming up, so that the research can be done.
Okay.
And, and one other clarification. They didn't deny it, they actually recommended denial. The information, and again, this goes to the information that was presented at one point versus the information that came out today, which is where my earlier question came from, with regards to the storage of parking and versus what type of materials would be there. I'm just trying to figure out what we can do in the future to better communicate this out to, to the general public.
All right, well, LaVores Pace sends out everything four times a day, and to me, that's personal. I get it.
Like where? I'm just, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Like, I don't get it four times a day, so I'm just trying to figure out where you're receiving this, so we can do it better.
LaVores Pace, the communication sends out information all the time. Did you know that?
I, I did, but I'm trying to figure out, are you talking about email?
Yeah.
Phone calls?
Personal emails.
Okay.
And also looking at the Voting Precinct, Voting Precinct 9. So you need to get in touch with the people in, in those areas somehow. I don't know about how other people get their information. I get it personal, because of the way I learn. And what is happening in our society is people are only interested in people who learn by hearing, got a good memory, can say anything that sounds good. I'm a visual learner, so I need more contact, face-to-face, personal emails. So I apologize for, you know, not being able to be intellectual like most people. Thanks for-
Thank you, Ms. Si. We appreciate your position. I would just like to clarify that this is a request for rezoning, not a use permit, and that there was extensive study done by the city in regards to the uptown land use proposed, and also based on the Build One Comprehensive Plan, all of which do not find this piece of property a light industrial use. So those are the reasons why the change of zoning is recommended to be denied.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next speaker is Mr. Mark Yudalde Yatroski.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Honorable Commissioners and fellow interested parties. In, in support of, part of Ms. Si's assertion, Commissioner Gee, there were only seven pages of documentation available through the website, and that's, it looks as though something didn't get put up that needed to be. The drawings, the diagrams, the photographs were not present when I downloaded yesterday. To the point, I agree with the recommendation of planning staff. I'm, I'm not happy to be in agreement with it, because I would like to see us help our business folks to grow and thrive, but there's a conflict here in terms of what was promised to the residents of Westbury or the potential residents when, when the development was coming into being. And that, that promise was that there would be a park at this location. I was happy to hear Mr. Baldwin say that when this item is disposed of, that there will be more conversation with PRHA about delivering on what was promised. I also get the willies when residential sections of the city are exposed to anything that has the industrial use attached to it. Light industrial, heavy industrial, industrial-industrial, whatever. I don't believe that residential and industrial applications go together well. In this particular instance, what's proposed as a, as a staging area, there will be truck traffic, so you have truck engines running, and as is typical, they run whether the trucks are actually moving or not, and there will likely be conversations going on, and these would disturb, are, are likely to disturb the peace and tranquility of the adjacent neighborhood. Not only that, once you rezone this property, a subsequent owner can do something that is compatible with the light industrial designation, which may be even more disruptive to the peace and harmony of the neighborhood. So it's a door that I don't like to see opened, and I think that the staff explanation of why they, why they have recommended denial covers most of the bases. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Lawrence Owens.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Lawrence Oze. I reside at 1452 Tally Circle, Portsmouth. I am president of the Westbury Improvement Association, not to be confused with the Westbury Civic League. We have two organizations that serve the Westbury community. I want to thank and commend the planning department's staff for the thorough evaluation of rezoning the application, Z-2001, which resulted in the recommendation of denial of the application. The Westbury Improvement Association is strongly against this application. We request that you follow the staff recommendation and vote against this application. There is already an agreement in place with the Westbury community, the City of Portsmouth, the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority, to use this subject parcel for open space. Since the subject property was purchased with HUD funds for the Westbury community, approval of this application will immediately trigger a request to HUD for an investigation. And I simply say that because I am very transparent, and if we don't stop this at this point, then when you get down the road, someone is going to say, "Well, why didn't you bring it up earlier?" I'm bringing it up now. The subject business has been cited more than once for code violations. Just to be clear, the Westbury Improvement Association will fight any action to approve this rezoning application. Thank you. Any questions? Let me just add, my home is six houses from this property. As president, I did not get a notification of any interest in rezoning. So no, this has not been a transparent process. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I have Mr. Claude's name, but you've already did your presentation. You don't have anything further to say, do you?
This property has been vacant for approximately about 20 years, and Housing Authority has already researched it and figure out that they couldn't do anything with it. And it's only, we only talking a half acre in the corner of this, on this property. If we keep it, it's been designated as a park, and for 20 years has been designated that, and nobody has actually touched it or even did anything with it. That's why the Housing Authority came back to me and asked me about what could I plan to do with it, so could it help me? That's why we, we, we entered into the conversation with them, and they agreed with me that this would be a okay site for this. It's not going to be a major, brought-out junkyard, not like that, just lay down plants and pick them up and take them out to the job site. That's all, all we asked it for. Thank you.
Commissioner Gee?
I, I feel kind of torn on this one. I'm a small business owner myself here in Portsmouth, so to me, business growth is, is important and vital. And, but I previously served as Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission, and I previously served on the Redevelopment Housing Administration Commission. And to me, it just seems like some of our commissions aren't talking to each other. If, if there's lands that are, that are established for a park, and our parks are always crying that they don't have lands to, to, well, they also don't have funds to develop those lands, which is a different discussion. But it just seems to me that if these lands were set aside for that and hasn't been addressed, those questions need to be answered from Redevelopment Housing Administration as well. I don't know if they're here today or have a resident, representative here today, but this is no fault of yours. I mean, to me, it just opened other questions that, that concerns many of us sitting up here and many others. So I just wanted to stress that, that parts of this aren't around necessarily just the usage. The usage is a concern. The city, or the Neighborhood Improvement Association has voiced that concern, but then there's also concerns of why were the usage, why was the usage that was set aside for not used as well? I, I just wanted to make those comments to you on this. Like, it, it really bothers me on two, on two different sides, looking at it from the business side as well as the land use side.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a-
Excuse me, do I get a chance over the bubbles?
Uh, no, sir. I'm-
Why did you get two, two opportunities to speak?
He submitted a request to speak in addition to being the applicant.
But his speech was the same thing that he gave earlier. You can't do that.
Does anyone have an objection to him speaking? Okay, come on up.
Now, again, with all due respect, this property, based on material that you have in front of you, was open space such as a park. Well, open space can be open space forever and a day. To say that because it wasn't used for 20 years does not negate the fact that it's open space. In addition to that, the Westbury community continues to be assaulted by companies that want to bring anything from a cell tower to a tractor-trailer yard, and now a, whatever you call it, staging area, that again will bring trucks, tractor-trailers, large trucks into that community. The Westbury community will not stand for it. It is already in code that this is residential. So to sit here and try to debate whether or not it should be light industrial is futile. You are bound by the law-
Thank you, sir. We have, uh-
To go on-
We've heard your opinion. Thank you very much. I do appreciate it, but we're going to move on unless you have some additional information.
Do I get five minutes?
Not, not the second time, sir. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z-20-01. If there's someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed. We need a motion.
Commissioners, we are in need of a motion. Commissioner Youngblood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairwoman. I'm going to make a motion that we deny this request, and as an aside, I'm doing so because I think that the land was designated as a park. Shame on the city for not doing much to develop it as a park. Shame on Westbury for not stepping forward and doing something on their own, but they still deserve to have a park. And, and so I personally am going to vote to deny this, but that's my motion, to deny.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Thaxton?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a motion and a second to deny Z-20-01. We have a motion and a second to deny Z-20-01. Just for a point of clarification, a yes vote is yes, you want to deny, and a no vote is no, you do not want to deny. We're clear? And we will have a, as I call your name, please indicate your response verbally. Commissioner Thompson.
Yes, I vote to deny.
Commissioner Youngblood.
Yes, I vote to deny.
Commissioner G.
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton.
Yes, I vote to deny.
Commissioner Ricks.
Yes, I vote to deny.
This item is denied by a vote of five to zero. Our next item, UP-19-20 Downtown. Jeremy Mills of ICS Home Investments LLC is requesting a use permit for four town homes on 0.234 acres at a density of 17 dwelling units per acre at 609 Columbia Street in the downtown D1 zoning district and the T4 sub-district. The property is designated on the future land use map in the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan as mixed-use downtown. The property is owned by ICS Home Improvements LLC and is further described as Tax Map 25, Parcel 129. The staff coordinator is Julie Chopp. Will the applicant or the representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Hello, Commission. My name is Jeremy Mills. I'm representing ICS Home Investments LLC. What we are proposing to do is take a unused lot on a dead-end street of 609 Columbia, and we are proposing to subdivide the lot into four lots and build four townhouses, single-family dwellings. And we're looking to produce affordable housing in an area that's right now unused. We are looking to make improvements to the street, extend the road, provide the sewage cleanouts, sewage supply, new water tap-ins, as well as getting the electric for the units. We have took into consideration the stormwater management, and we have a stormwater management plan. We have also presented to the downtown design committee, and we have gained approval from them with certain stipulations of material to be used, such as brick facade, aluminum-clad windows, hardy plank siding on the sides and rear to keep with the look of the downtown And that is what we are looking to do. We do have off-street parking in the front because the area is pretty tight and there's no area to turn around. So we have gained approval to do parking lots, driveways in the area as well, as well as landscaping plans have been approved. That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Youngblood.
Thank you, ma'am. These are going to be townhouses, and you mentioned affordable housing. Can you give a range of what these would sell for?
We are looking currently, at the current market value, we will be selling for under 200, under 200,000.
Does that mean 110? Does that mean...
No, we're looking between 180 and 200.
Okay, good. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the commission?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-19-20. I do have one registered speaker, Donna Si.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in Woodman Farms neighborhood. You know, I'm concerned about all these houses y'all want to build in this city. People are leaving this city. The properties aren't being maintained, the streets aren't being maintained, the street gutters aren't being maintained, and you continue to want to put housing. And one of the things that was mentioned is abandoned church behind it. So you're going to put houses, and then you're going to have abandoned church behind it. He mentioned there's tight parking in the area, and all the things he wants to do to make sure this, these houses will be in a safe, all the conveniences of parking and sewage and electricity. We don't need any more houses. All right? This is voting precinct one, which is downtown. What do the people in Old Town Civic League or the Old Town Business Association, what were their opinions on all this? Talking about elevation, there's flooding downtown. Are these houses going to be lifted up off the ground? So I'm just concerned about the design that we're creating for our city. Communication is a big gap. And y'all are going to vote, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six people are going to vote for 94,000 people. I don't see where that's self-government. Thanks for listening.
Ms. Si, could I please clarify that we are an advisory commission, and we merely recommend to city council? They have the final say.
Yeah.
And they were elected officials.
Well, we, the people, are the government, if you look at the organizational chart, and that ain't happening.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-19-20. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Wash Carthorn. I'm the owner of 812 Washington Street, right there in Newport News. And correction on the building, it's not, the church building is not vacant. Everything's going well. We're looking to get in there this year. And when I first learned about someone wanted to build something on the property, I was, on that property, I was floored because right now, I think it's unsafe to do that. We've got a lot of kids that live next door. They play in that area, they play basketball. And so as of stand now, that's a good flow in their neighborhood right now. So it's going to create congestion problems in terms of being overcrowded. Also, parking issue at peak times is going to be an issue as well. And we're talking about townhouses, we're talking about disadvantaged because of increased noise and decreased privacy. That's going to be another issue. Also, increased family size. Well, most people do, when they get more family, they leave. And so they rent the place out, which means that translates that the property is going to go down. It's mentioned how much it's going to cost, what type of people coming into the neighborhood. That's a concern. So based on these things, I think it's not a good idea to put anything in that area right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Youngblood.
Sir, to address your comments, I live in that area. And A, if the kids are playing on that property, they're on private property. They need to find a place to play. Maybe when you operate, when you open up your church, you can build a playground for them. This multifamily development is consistent with other housing within a block of theirs, of that location. It's not subsidized housing. You talk about what kind of people are going to come in there. I find that this is going to be very consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. And I personally don't see how this is going to be detrimental to the safety of the area. It's on a dead-end street, so parking is not going to be impacted. Each unit has a garage plus an 18-foot-wide driveway. So in my mind, you could probably get three cars there if you really had to, or two pickup trucks. I just don't think that your arguments, although well-founded, carry a whole lot of weight. Now, at the same time, I applaud the idea that you're going to open that church up. I don't know what you're going to do with it, but it certainly would be nice to have somebody using it for something. Church, restaurant, I don't really care. But to get some use out of that property would be wonderful. It's been vacant for the entire 21 years that I've been here. So my hat's off to you for making that investment. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Mr. Youngblood.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If there's anyone here who would like to address UP-19-20, you may come forward, state your name and your address. You will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Dr. Brenda Darren DeCree, and I live at 712 Washington Street, Portsmouth. So my residence, and it's a single-family home, is right beside where this development will take place. So I believe I may have saw my home in a picture that was flashed on the screen a minute ago. And yes, that is my home there with that garage. So it's fairly close. Like, these townhouses would basically be in my backyard, just a little bit over. That's the dead-end street right there. And Commissioner Youngblood, my children, I have young children, they do play, and it's a dead-end street. And I really love the location of my house as well because it is a dead-end street, and we have that corner lot. So they are able to play on that dead-end street. They're not on the church property or anything like that. So I mean, they ride their bikes and play basketball right there, have a basketball goal and stuff. So my concern is just the safety for my children as far as building these townhomes. The picture looks great, you know, what they will look like. And also, another big concern as well is affordable housing. And that was a big concern for me as well, as my house is valued at a lot more than 100,000, and it's more than 200,000 as well. And so that's a big concern. The affordable housing we'll bring right here to my backyard, was it, you know, on the lower end. So thank you, Commissioner Youngblood, for clarifying, asking more questions concerning that. So that was a big issue of the people that would be bringing in to the area, and it's so close to my home. And also, I'm a single parent as well, so everything that goes on in the neighborhood and in the city is a big concern of mine as well. So I just wanted to bring those concerns and just to make sure that you all take into consideration what we're voting on and what you're doing is for just the best interest of the citizens as well, and those that live right here and will be directly affected as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner G, did you have a question?
Not necessarily a question, but just a statement, and just to reiterate something you said earlier, Madam Chairwoman. It is our task to look at the land use. The valid points that are being made today are things I highly recommend you all voice to city council. They are very valid points. However, our scope is strictly, by the law, is this the fair use of this land? Is this what the rules say this land should be used for? So I agree with every point that's made on both sides here, but that's not the lenses I get to look at things through today. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood those points, and when this does come before city council, if when, that you do address those concerns then as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address UP-19-20? You may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, we are in need of a motion. Commissioner Thaxton.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to make a motion to approve UP-19-20 with conditions.
Commissioner G.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve UP-19-20. As I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Thompson.
Yes, approve.
Commissioner Youngblood.
Yes.
Commissioner G.
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Ricks.
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of five to zero. Our final item, UP-20-01 Airline Commercial Corridor. Mark Davis requests a use permit for an outdoor kennel at 2880B Airline Boulevard. The property is zoned general mixed-use, GMU, and is a part of the Victory West Shopping Center. The property is further described as Tax Map 577, Parcel 20. The comprehensive plan recommends commercial development for the property. Our staff coordinator is Stacy Porter. The applicant is already at the podium. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Mark Davis. I live at 252 Florida Avenue here in Portsmouth. I'm the owner of Port Rover LLC. Also have Ms. Sherry Capuano, she's my facilities manager, and Ms. Toni McCloud, she's the property manager at the Victory West Plaza where Port Rover is located. We're a family-owned doggy daycare and boarding and grooming and training facility. We're submitting for a use permit for a small fenced-in area at the rear of the building. It's been labeled, let's see, it's been labeled as a, for a kennel, but I want to be clear that it's not a kennel, it's just a fenced-in area that the dogs would have, go out and have some playtime in, and, you know, short periods of time. The area would have no ability to house any dogs for any period of time. This area will be used to allow dogs and boarders a little bit of time to get some fresh air and some sunshine. Fenced-in area will only be used during work hours, and the dogs will always be supervised by staff. Any excessive barkers will be immediately removed and placed back inside the facility. In preparation for this meeting, we've taken some time to talk to some of our neighbors behind us to the north. We presented letters to them explaining exactly what we were requesting and the promises we intend to keep. We spoke to homeowners, most of the homes located on Mohican Drive. And if the owners were not at home, we left a letter and a brochure on their door and went back several times and tried to contact them. One homeowner was concerned about the fence budding up against his fence line. This was quickly explained by showing him an aerial map that our fence dimensions would be at least 75 feet away from his plot line. After seeing this, he was on board and willing to sign a letter saying that, you know, he's fine with what we're proposing, and he does not want, currently, we walk dogs on a leash out in a big fence, in a big grassy area behind. He don't like that because that interferes with his dogs, you know? He's happy that we're going to be at least 75 feet off of his line. We also... We also received signed letters from all of the business owners in the Victory West Plaza, saying they're fine with what we want to do. As mentioned earlier, this area will be used to allow for all of our boarding and daycare dogs a safe space to get some fresh air throughout the day. We currently are walking individual dogs on a leash in the grassy area. This presents safety hazards for the dogs and our staff, as well as aggravates the neighbor's personal dogs. On occasion, there's cars and trucks behind the building that pose a risk for our staff and dogs. Dogs on a leash are able to snap their collars, slip harnesses, encounter other loose dogs in the area, and not to mention carry canine diseases and parasites found in the soil. The health and safety of our clients' dogs and, and our staff is our priority. Having this small fenced-in area will allow the dogs' freedom to do their business without encountering any risk to themselves or others. In addition, if our dogs have access to fresh air and sunshine, it will help boost their immune system, reduce stress levels, and would be good for their overall well-being while being boarded. If you visit our facility, you would know that we run a very tight ship, and cleaning and sanitation is one of our priorities. The back fenced-in area will be well-maintained and kept clean, again, for the safety of the dogs.
30 more seconds.
I'm, I'm open for any questions.
How many dogs do you think you would be caring for a given day that you would use in the back?
In the back, we would rotate maybe five to seven dogs maximum out there at any given time.
And what type of dogs would they be? You know, we have small, then we have dogs that bark, you know, so loud or everything that could disturb the neighbors, so that's what we're worried about.
Sure. We have big dogs and small dogs. The permit we are asking for is the, outlined in yellow would be for our smaller dogs, outlined in red would be for our larger dogs. And again, any excessive barkers, we would not allow out there.
I have a question. Who owns the large grassy lot that you're currently using for the dogs?
That's the Victory West Plazas.
There's no chance to put a fenced area out there so they would have grass under their feet instead of asphalt?
Yeah. We prefer not to walk dogs in a grassy area because they're, you know, the soil carries various, you know, parasites and viruses. And plus, to get the dogs from our back door to there, we would have to be crossing a road there.
Commissioner G?
To her concern, are there concerns about the heat in the summertime with that asphalt, with the dogs being out there on asphalt?
First of all, we, we do plan on putting a green AstroTurf down on the asphalt for the dogs to be on. Second, if any in excessive heat conditions and cold conditions, we would not release the dogs into this area.
Don't go anywhere yet. Mr. Baldwin, would anything like this be subject to a site plan or review or?
No.
Commissioner Ricks?
What is the maximum number of dogs that you would, you know, board at that facility?
We can hold up to approximately 50 dogs maximum.
So would this outdoor space take the place of them being walked on the leash over in the grass?
Yes.
Well, I have a concern also then about runoff from the urine or the feces from the animals, and I just think that would not be very clean or healthy for the dogs.
The, the solid waste will be picked up by hand and disposed of properly. The liquid waste, we would, you know, spray it down, and it would go into the...
Storm drain?
Yeah. The sewer.
Anybody else?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-20-01. I do have two registered speakers. The first speaker is Mr. Mark Yodaldi Yotrowski.
Good afternoon again, Madam Chair, Honorable Commissioners, and fellow interested parties. Mark Yodilde Yotrowski in the Sterling Point neighborhood of Portsmouth. So at my residence, I do have an in-home consultant about matters affecting canines. And when I laid this plan out to Sandy, Karen Carrier, approximately 12 years old, she definitely echoed the concern about the hard surface in heated conditions. I think, though, that with what the applicant has stated about having a turf surface in that area, her concern would be alleviated. Now Sandy doesn't express concern about barking. That's one of her hobbies, especially around other dogs. But the fact that the canines on, canines on site will be accompanied by a human who is taking responsibility for their deportment outside would alleviate my concerns about disturbing neighbors. And I'm particularly pleased to hear that the applicant has gone out into the neighborhood and left letters and spoken to the people who would be bordering that area. That seems like a good neighbor approach, and it opens lines of communication should anything arise later on. So I had originally indicated I was opposed to this proposal, but based on the applicant's presentation, I, I am in favor of letting it go forward with the stipulations that the applicant made. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Donna Tsai.
My name is Donna Tsai, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. My first issue when this presentation was being done and the work session, my question was, who talked with the project director? And after hearing Mr. Davis giving his report, I saw that he was doing all the work to make sure that his proposal was going to be okayed by his neighbors and business folks. This project is in Voting Precinct 31. It's Park Manor Civic League is part of that. And it's a continuing problem here, communication. I need to review the duties and responsibilities of your commission because I'm not seeing y'all doing anything but sitting up there making decisions without any action on your own. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Tsai.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, again, this is a public hearing on item UP-20-01. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Before I ask for a motion, I would just like to ask a question of the property manager. Can you please come forward? Can I do that?
I'm Toni McLeod, Senior Property Manager for Pembroke Real Estate.
Thank you for coming forward. I still have great concerns about the cleanliness. Barking is one thing, but I think that this is probably not going to smell very good, and I'm worried about the dogs and the heat, and I just have a lot of concerns with this. So have you, you spoken with the neighbors, the people on both sides that have back doors adjoining this?
I have. Everybody is fine, and you need to go visit their, their facility. It's very nice. They run it well. It's clean. The dogs are all happy. I mean, the landlord has no objection whatsoever.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Mr. Baldwin, I have one for you then. If we give them a use permit for an outdoor kennel, does that mean anyone can put anything back there, including pot-bellied pigs or whatever in the future they might want to do?
Well, we do have restrictions on certain animals, but this is, you know, regulated as a pet kennel. This would be for, you know, dogs, I presume primarily. And the conditions you'd be opposing are the ones that would be, were, if you were to recommend approval, the ones I believe that the staff suggested and the staff reports you would want to consider. Pot-bellied pigs, there's all sorts of other animals that show up. We typically don't treat them as typical domestic pets in Portsmouth. Those are regulated under separate city code.
Thank you. Then I am going to refer back to the recommendations where it is stated clearly that this is inconsistent with this ordinance. Interior activities, I'm sure, are wonderful, and I love animals. Trust me, this isn't it. But I just have concerns with this. So with that said, anybody else? All right. We are in need of a motion. Commissioner Thaxton?
I'd like to make a motion to deny UP-20-01.
I need a second. Commissioner Ricks?
I second the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to deny UP-20-01. Once again, a yes vote is you approve of denying, and a no is you want to, you don't As I call your name, please indicate your reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Thompson?
Yes, deny.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes, to deny.
Commissioner G?
No.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes, to deny.
Commissioner Ricks?
Yes, to deny.
This item is denied by a vote of four to one.
All right. I don't believe there's any more items on the agenda?
No, there isn't.
Mr. Baldwin, do you have anything for us?
I'd just like to mention one thing. During one of your earlier applications, one gentleman mentioned that we had not been transparent because he did not receive a notice, and he lived six houses down from the side. We just want to make sure people understand the adjacent property notification. That's what is called adjacent property owner notification. And our requirement is to notify anyone whose property physically touches and abuts or is directly across the street. So you could be very close or nearby and not receive notice. That is because we are following the state code mandate on how we're required to provide property owner notification. Just want to clarify that.
Thank you.
Mr. Baldwin, don't you also notify the civic leagues?
Yes, we do. We do a few things in addition. Sometimes we'll go actually beyond the exact boundary depending on the application, but there are quite often people come and say they didn't believe they, they had not been noted, received a notification. Planning Commission agenda a couple of months ago, we had the same issue raised by someone indicated they had been notified. So we'd just like to reiterate the mandated requirement for who we notify. And yes, we do notify civic leagues when they are identified.
And also, I believe the orange signs are posted on the properties.
Yes, and we hopefully by our next round of application will be replacing those with some new signs to look a little bit nicer.
Thank you. Commissioners, is there any more business? Mr. Baldwin, you're good? All right. With that said, this meeting is adjourned.